I ask for prayer and pleas to be led by Councilmember Whitcher.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, we come to you today humbled and with troubled hearts. Our hearts are sad for the skirmishes and the killing that's going on around the world. We pray for our servicemen and women who are serving other countries trying to help those We pray for your guidance as we go into this year. We pray for your love and ask for your forgiveness. In the name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Whitcher.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Communications, I'm just showing one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Anybody, we want to read that? Anybody? Basically, what it says is, I'll give an executive summary. It's Bill Tolan. I grew up with Bill, former North Little Rock resident bragging about just how wonderful our Burns Park is and how much improved it's been over the last couple of years. So, we want to thank Bill for making those comments. How about a motion?
Move, accept, and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross, White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Whitcher.
Yes.
Thank you. I've got, I'm gonna take just a moment, and Mark Hayes, if you'll come up to the microphone. I think all of you know Mark, who is our lead counsel at the municipal league. We've had an issue that our legal defense fund's been working on for some time, and it has all come together fairly quickly. We have some timelines that we need to address, so I wanted Mark to come and give us an executive summary of what we're working on as far as this opioid epidemic.
Epidemic.
Epidemic. And let him explain to you. What I'm gonna do is ask you for a voice vote tonight, and then we'll come back in with the council with the resolution at the next meeting. So, Mark.
Thank you for seeing me at this late date. As the mayor said, the opioid class action and MDL cases are moving at light speed. There is a hearing set in St. Louis for the MDL, which is a multi-district litigation, where all the federal court actions, of which there are 66 currently pending as of about two weeks ago. I think that number's probably more like 70 to 75 right now out of the 11 circuits in the country. So, here's, I want to kind of just backtrack a little bit, and I don't think I need to convince any of you that there's an epidemic when it comes to opioids. I have in the process of looking at these cases and researching it with some lawyers. I've learned some very dire things. 173 Americans die per day from an overdose. It's the highest, overdoses are the highest accidental death rate over and above motor vehicle accidents. Let that sink in for just a minute. Motor vehicle accidents for 50, 60, 70 years have been the, by far and away, the highest accidental death rate. We have 580 people a day that graduate from prescription pills to heroin. For those of you who don't know, if you're susceptible to it, four to six oxycodone or hydrocodone pills can easily get you addicted. Now, that's if you're susceptible to it. Not everybody is. Almost always, this affects the millennial branch more than anybody. Certainly, there are others that are exceptions to that, but age brackets from 16 to 35 or so seem to be the greatest, greatest at risk. I could tell you many, many more figures, but the truth is, from a personal standpoint, I could virtually guarantee everybody in this room knows somebody or some group of somebodies who has had this problem. I personally have four millennial kids, and I have unfortunately had to attend at least three funerals of their friends who have died for this just horrible epidemic. And I don't have a, I don't have a pen with enough ink to write down the number of names of their acquaintances and people that they know that are either in rehab, out of rehab, or currently struggling with the addiction. It is a powerful, horrible thing, and it is costing taxpayers literally billions of dollars. Societal costs, just in the year 2015, 16, $55 billion. $20 billion in emergency room visits alone. So, it is a huge cost. All you have to do is talk to either your fire chief or your police chief. They will tell you that the number of calls that they've had to overdoses has dramatically increased over the last several years, and with that, the cost to the city of North Little Rock. So, that brings me to the litigation. Cities and counties are sort of on the front line of this from a taking care of the epidemic standpoint. We do everything for emergency responses, and I don't know, Chief, if you guys have Narcan yet, and I can, I know of a good friend of mine's son who was just recently saved because Little Rock Police Department had Narcan, and they were able to administer it during his, what would have been dying breaths. So, and all that costs money. It costs you a great deal of money to send police on those calls or fire department personnel on those calls when they could be doing other things besides dealing with that problem. And that is one of just a drop in the bucket. On the county perspective, coroners from across the country don't have, this is horribly morbid thing to say, they don't have enough space to store the dead bodies from the overdoses. That's, it is a phenomenal, horrible problem, and we think litigation is the way to solve it. I'm not, I don't say that lightly. I'm not a big believer in litigation to solve societal problems, but I think this is one of the things. I don't have to tell you that if the city of North Little Rock is sitting next to the city of Houston in one of these cases, or the city of New York, you're gonna be small in comparison. So, in conjunction with the Association of Arkansas Counties and their risk management pool, and a PERMA who covers both a few counties and a few cities, and then the defense program, we have about 450 of the 500 cities in this state in our defense program. We are collectively going to bring a MDL and class action against the opioid distributors, probably the manufacturers, and it may even get to some doctors, we'll see. In all likelihood, it'll be the distributors, that's the cleanest route to this problem, based on some problems that they had in reporting. And I say problems, as in they didn't. What I'm asking you to do, we'll be meeting, the defense program will be meeting on the 29th. This hearing I told you about is on the 30th. I would like to be able to tell the defense program, give them a recommendation. We have a series of law firms, some in-state and some out, who are well-versed in this kind of litigation. Corey Watson out of Alabama is the, will be the lead counsel in the firm, but he has deep, rich ties to the state of Arkansas, and we are gonna be right at the top of his priority list. If we can get a great number of counties and a great number of cities to enter an appearance into these cases, we have a very good chance to help tide the epidemic, first of all, and then to actually address the additional problems once we stop people from taking the drug, which are immense. There's just an immense amount of education that still have to go through. We still have to take care of those people that are addicted. And with that, what I'm asking for is your permission. There's no money out of your pocket. The reason I'm here is the mayor will be our president, and I'm going to Springdale tomorrow. Doug Sprouse is our president, and we thought if we're gonna have leadership, and both are in the defense program, we needed to be able to show that the leadership of the league was behind this. I apologize again for how quick this has happened, but we literally are drinking out of a fire hydrant right now. The speed with which all this is going is immense. We've done our due diligence. I've spent more man-hours than you want to know about studying this and talking with lawyers across the country. I think we've got a good plan of action. The defense program approves it on Wednesday, and the mayor could sign the litigation, and North Little Rock would be engaged in the case by Wednesday afternoon, Thursday morning at the latest. So, with that, I'll take questions and address anything that I may have neglected to say.
Ms. Ross.
Mark, any representation? Y'all will handle everything, so we're not gonna have to be depending on our legal department for any additional manpower hours.
No, it all will be done. We'll coordinate through my office. We will use league staff when it's necessary, but primarily, the outside lawyers will do the largest percentage of the work. And there's no cost. The defense program will suffer some of those costs on the front end because we think it's valuable, and we think we can make this, we can curb this problem at a municipal level, I hope.
Other questions? With that, let me ask for a voice vote. Ms. Whitby, why don't we call a roll on a voice vote to allow me Wednesday to sign this affidavit that will make us part of that lawsuit, and we'll follow up. Amy, with the resolutions, next meeting.
It'll be an attorney's agreement to bring the case. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you want to motion before the voice vote?
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Yes.
Ross, White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Whitcher.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark, very much.
Thank you all very much, and I look forward to giving you positive reports over the next several years, unfortunately, but I look forward to talking with you more. And I'm always available for questions if you have them, so feel free to do that.
Good deal. Thank you very much.
May I be excused, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, let's see here what we've got. We have public comment on legislation. Let's see what we've got. We have Elizabeth Colwell on R. 17193. Ms. Colwell, are you here?
Yes, sir. I just have a question.
Okay. And who are you with?
I'm with Eric Trigundruth.
Okay, okay.
I think.
All right, Kaylin, you too. Y'all just want to wait for any questions. And Kelly Moore.
Same.
Same. And Brad Peterson.
Just curious.
Well, we'll bypass those if there's any questions. I don't think we have any unfinished business, do we, Ms. Whitby?
No, sir.
Well, let's just go right on into new business.
R. 17192, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the North Little Rock School District for the exchange of real property.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Questions?
Can we just kind of explain a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, let me. We've been working on this for quite some time, and we had one, two, three locations that we were all looking at with our committee that we formed. The first location, which I liked the most, was where Moose Cleaners is and that corner, because I thought it was the most visible. But to take him out of business was gonna be very expensive. And so, we met and toured the armory, and then I met with the general, and he said that they could be bought out of it. They have a 38-year lease left, 38 years left on their lease with the school district. They had that appraised at $800,000, and he and I negotiated a cost of $500. So, he feels like the $500 is about what it's gonna cost the army to move and get prepared to put those groups in a different location. So, that's a $500,000 cost, plus the demolition of the two buildings. The other building, of course, is next door for the school admin building. And what we proposed to the school district is that we will swap that property, all the armory property and the administration property, for our main police and courts building on Pershing and the chief's office and admin building on Main Street. We thought that was very fair, and my first blush from them, they haven't voted on it or discussed it, but is that they pretty much agreed. They're gonna have a retreat in the next week, and I'm sure that they'll entertain it further. And then, further, do we have in this legislation with the army? We hadn't done that yet.
Right.
Okay. As soon as the school district has approved it, then we'll do an MOU with the general, and then we'll all start moving towards closing. So, that's where we are. Questions? On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Whitcher.
Yes.
R. 17193, Councilmember Taylor.
Let me jump in here, Mr. Taylor, real quick. I promised you guys a more detailed, up-to-date on where we are, but I had, it's like herding chickens. So, I had to go ahead and get this ball rolling. But before Christmas, I think we'll have a little bit of a report on where we are, what we've done, what we're thinking as far as fire departments concerned. Might even have you a draft of recommendations for your half million dollars per award before the end of the year. I don't see Chris out there. Danny, you think that's possible? So, please forgive me for not getting it to you earlier, but it's just taken a lot of time to put our arms around this big old thing. So, that's where we are. Okay.
Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a modification to an agreement with Arkansas Trison Group LLC, Arkansas Trison Farms LLC, and Kaylin Tankersley individually to extend the time for removal and cleanup of recycled concrete on property located at 12602 Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock.
I have a question. Mayor?
Question. You want, let's get it on the floor first.
So move.
How about a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Height.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but back at the first of the year, we did not approve Tankersley's receiving a permit to put recycled concrete on that piece of property, right? And then in, was it August, that we gave them a deadline of November the 30th to have that concrete removed? And they also had a court date, I want to say sometime in September, is that correct? And they went in front of the judge. What happened during that court date? Was there any?
I don't have a clue, but I'm sure, I'm sure one of them could tell you exactly what happened at the court date.
You know that, Amy?
There was a plea agreement, and there was a significant fine. I do not remember.
It was about $8,000, wasn't it, Kaylin? Yeah, $8,000 fine.
I was actually there, and that is correct.
All right. So, since that period of time, have they acquired a permit to pile concrete up on that piece of property?
The concrete was already there from when they had operated after the special use was denied up until sometime during the summer. They had an accumulation of recycled concrete. They had a contract with a contractor for the highway department to provide those materials. So, the city council approved the agreement that they entered into in August that they couldn't recycle anymore. There couldn't be more crushing of concrete, but they could remove it.
Has there been any more concrete added to that pile of concrete?
Ask them.
There's not?
Ms. Robinson.
I know that they were supposed to move everything, the agreement, by November 30th, but what some of us up here want to know is, what happened? Why weren't they able to move the stuff by November 30th?
Why don't we get whoever y'all want to come up and talk?
Well, I mean, it's a pretty simple answer, isn't it? I mean, from my understanding is the concrete is being supplied back to the highway department. The project, and as we all know, when it comes to construction, especially a project as large as 440, when it comes to those type of projects, sometimes they get extended. Sometimes they don't hit deadlines. So, now the project has been extended further than what they had anticipated to be November or December. So, now it's over into May or June of next year. The, I guess the long and short of it is, if we decide that we shut this operation down, then from my understanding is, then the whole project that they're working on at 440 gets shut down until they figure out how they're gonna get that done. So, I mean, everybody is kind of between a rock and a hard spot, but it's there. We've gotta deal with it, and the only way, the only way and the best way to deal with it, from my thinking, is to extend it. They went to court, they paid the fine, and let the job be completed so we can get on with I-30.
Okay. So, my question is this, is, okay, they're taking the concrete from 440 and crushing it, is that correct?
No.
No.
You're not?
It's being supplied to the project.
What it started out as is they brought in the concrete they were removing from the freeway project, and we recycled it into a usable product instead of it being taken somewhere and just left in a wasteland.
So.
So, in the middle of doing all this and trying to get the permits and everything, due to nothing other than a misunderstanding, we didn't have the proper permit to do so. Then around August, everything hit the fan for not having the permit. So, then we come up here and tried to get the permit, I think, and then we got fined for operating without the permit. We paid the fine, we negotiated with the city an agreement to extend the deadline, or to allow us to go ahead and finish what we started. And that deadline has, is approaching, and now we need to extend it in order to supply the highway department's contractor with the aggregate they need to finish the project.
So, why didn't you get a permit?
I did come in and apply for the permit, and we were missing a stormwater permit that night. And from my understanding, we were supposed to get the stormwater permit and move forward, and everything was fine. Well, and also, we're developing the property for a residential subdivision as well in the future, and a lot of the things that is going on there is conducive to that project as well. That's not what's in front of you, though. And from my understanding, the stormwater permit was all that we were missing, and everything rocked on for a few months, and nobody had a problem with anything until August. And then, we've always wanted to do what we were supposed to, to be on the right road with the city, to have all the permits and everything that we needed. And we, as usual, are trying to do exactly.
So, you kept on keeping on even though you didn't have a permit, is that right?
Well, I was under the impression that everything was fine once we got the stormwater prevention plan permit that we supplied to the city engineer, because that was the holdup that night. And that's when everything come to a screeching halt, as we're standing here right now, back in February.
And just for point of clarification, I know I wasn't here in February, but I am aware of some of the history of this. The permit that she's referring to is it was before the city council in February. In order to use the property for concrete recycling, she needed a special use permit, which, you know, is a zoning matter for use of the property. The special use permit was not granted on that night in February because it didn't get a second. And so, there was never a special use permit issued in order for her to use the property that way. And so, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't like a permit to do business, it was a special use permit with respect to the use of the property.
And also, that night, we had the special use permit for the dirt pit where we're digging out the lakes for the subdivision, in order to sell the dirt pit, or the dirt. And they said, get a city license and all that kind of stuff, so that's what I did.
Well, according to, according to the adjacent property owner, that pile of concrete is a lot bigger today than it was back in August.
Well, we're supplying the entire 440 rehabilitation project there. I mean, we're in the middle of 600 and something acres, but the moment all this happened in August, when I realized that me and the mayor weren't on the same page, the hauling in of the concrete stopped, the crusher left, it's sitting at Blackman Auctions Yard right now, if you want to go look at it. That all stopped, because I thought we were all on the same page. Chris Wilber came out three times and saw what was going on. We all, the mayor, I thought he was on the same page. I thought we were all on the same page. There wasn't a code enforcement guy coming out there knocking on my door. Roger Green shows up first part of August, and I called the mayor, and that's when I realized that the legislation wasn't correct for what we were doing.
Which we've since tried to.
Ms. White.
And we've since tried to do everything in our power, including pay a fine, go to court, do everything we can to make it right. And we're not talking about a permanent permit here. You know, this is not something that we're gonna continue doing in the city limits.
Okay, could we skip to the legislation at hand in which the question I had?
Please.
Is, because we've discussed this many times. The completion date on this legislation says April or May of 2018. What chance is there that this is not going to be accomplished by that point? Are we gonna be in May? Are we gonna be coming again? I mean, even the fact that it's April or May, obviously, we need to clarify that.
The jobs will be completed at that time.
And who are you?
Need him to come forward and identify himself.
Come and identify yourself, if you would, sir. Come to the microphone so that we can have a recording of it, and tell us who you are, who you represent.
My name's Kelly Moore. I'm with Cost Construction. We're the general on the project out here on 440. There have been some things that occurred since we acquired this project. There have been some delays. There were a few plan omissions, errors from the DOT's designer that caused some delays with us getting this product from AR Trison out to the project and in place, you know, in a timely manner, as it would have been. And then, there's also been some change orders that added some material to the project that we're gonna be pulling from them, too, as well. But everything is gonna be well-finished. We're real close to our original planned completion within the next 30 to 45 days, and so that's gonna get the bulk of the material that we need to pull from them. And then, the addition to the project, the last addition, is the Fush Dam Pike interchange, and we're just about to receive the change order for that. So, that work's gonna be getting underway real shortly. There shouldn't, there's no chance that the project won't be done at that time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Robinson.
Well, I'm thinking, in my mind, it may be a chance that it's not done. If the weather, I mean, can you, I mean, weather will cause an extension on this project. So, how did we come up with, give us another four or five months? Because with the weather, if there's a problem with weather and stuff, it's gonna take more than another four or five months.
The reason it's not another month or two is because there's an additional exit being added onto the project. The whole Fush Dam off and on-ramp, eastbound, westbound, have been added. Now, no rubble, y'all, just keep this, remember, nothing else is coming in there. Only thing we're doing is removing what y'all want us to remove.
Okay.
Nothing else coming in there.
Ms. Ross.
There's no crushing going on, it's only removal.
I spoke with Ms. Fields today about, you know, what kind of fine if they go past, you know, if this is approved, if they go past, and her explanation, I'll let you explain about it, was in the original.
In the original agreement that was signed by Mayor Smith and by Ms. Tankersley on behalf of herself and AR Trison, there were certain conditions in the agreement. One of them was the end date, that they would have a business permit, that they would only operate during certain hours of operation. And a part of that agreement was that if they violated any provisions of the agreement about how they were gonna operate with the removal of the rubble, that they agreed to a penalty of $500 for each day of breach of the agreement. When I drafted the modification of agreement for the council's consideration, after Councilmember Taylor said that he would sponsor this legislation, I put the, I modified the completion date completion date to be May 31st, which was at the outside edge of what Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Tankersley's lawyer had told me that the time to be completed, but also specifically noted in the modification to agreement that's attached to the legislation, that all other provisions of the agreement would remain in place, and that includes the $500 penalty for day, per day for violation of the agreement.
To, to address something that I, I think Ms. Robinson and Ms. White were a little bit concerned about, the impression that, you know, we just weren't getting it done by November 30th. We, we were originally concerned that that was a tight deadline, because dealing with any construction project, as you mentioned, there are always delays, and, you know, we brought that up with the city that maybe initially speaking, you know, December 31st would've been a good deadline, and the response was generally, you know, well, we want to make sure you get your business permit and everything else in place, let's go with November 30th, make, make sure you're minding your Ps and Qs, and if you need an extension, address it then. And so when it got to be, you know, first, second week of November, and it was real clear what was happening, that's why we got on the agenda.
Mr. Taylor?
Um, wow. Again, I'm, I'm really confused. The pile's there, it ain't going nowhere until, until-
Until they, until they remove it.
Well, until they remove it for, for what it was there for, and that is to supply the, the highway department with the concrete to, with the material to finish the project. So, I mean, we've had, this is, I think it's the third or fourth time we've hashed this out. And I, I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for council member Robinson, but it, it seems to me that, that she was alluding to the fact that even if they don't get through by May the 31st, that we're, we're putting this, this, we're sticking another deadline out there, and then here comes May of next year, or May 15th or May 1st of next year, and, I mean, the sun, moon, the stars didn't line up, and it didn't get finished, 'cause it's possible, 'cause this is a construction project, and sometimes weather and all kind of other stuff will, will extend the deadline. So, why, why would we put this, this date on here, and we're not absolutely positively sure they're not gonna hit it, and we're gonna be back in here rehashing the same thing over again? Why would we put a date in here that, that we know that they're gonna have, give them enough time to keep, to, to, to do what it is we want them to do, which is get the concrete out?
I agree, I agree with everything you say. I just want to guarantee that they're not gonna add any more concrete to that pile to have to extend the deadline even further. Ms. Robinson?
Once the project is completed, how would we know? They're gonna call us and tell us the project is completed. And then-
We would get a substantial completion certificate from-
No, we can't, no.
I'll, I'll be able to tell you when it's complete, 'cause I drive both directions every day.
We can agree to provide the substantial completion certificate.
And then the second thing, Ms. Whitby, if this passes tonight, what will they need in order to start back up or do the job?
A new business license.
From looking at the attachment, they'll need to come in and get a new business license through December 31st, and then in January, they will need to get a business license that will expire on whatever date is decided tonight. And then they'll pay the base fee for that license, plus the number of employees, which my understanding is they had one.
One doing the-
I think that's what, that's what-
It's subcontracted.
Okay, it's subcontracted.
Ms. Ross?
Okay, uh, this is just a question. How many loads are y'all removing a day? Because, I mean, it doesn't look, I know it's a huge pile, and it's gonna take a lot to make it look like it goes down, but, I mean, it doesn't look like even a dent's been made into it, and I don't know if that's just from the street, you can't see that, or how much has been removed so far.
Y'all are welcome to come out anytime.
But how much has been removed so far?
I would say 30% of the pile's been removed.
Since August?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I want to know. I just want to make sure that you were actually getting rid of it.
And matter of fact, we've invited council members out there even before the August meeting to come out. I mean, we're an open book, you know? We've raised, we've, the set, this project's raised over $30,000 in sales tax revenue, and that's not even, we're not even 40% done. I'm saying 30, you may be saying more, but-
Okay, I have one other question. May I have one other question? And this is for the different council, and I don't know how we want to go about this. Has anybody received complaints? I know this is in your ward, so I don't know, and then council member Height said that he had spoke with someone, so I'm just curious as to, has there been any opposition from the neighborhood?
I've only had one complaint, but now, that person, they want them to just clear the stuff out of there. You know, that's the thing, we just want it gone. So, you know, so if it takes an extension to get it gone, we need to get it gone. I just want them to do what they say they're gonna do.
We have always done what we say we were gonna do. I promised y'all that that road would stay watered, I promised you the street would stay clean, I promised you we would only have certain business hours. I, when I found out that we weren't in compliance with the legislation, the first thing I did was have Limby contact the city and get something going. That's why we're here tonight, is we want to stay in compliance, and we want to do what we say we're gonna do, and we don't want to break any rules.
Alderman, and I still have the floor, correct?
Say that again?
I still have the floor. Because I wanted to ask Alderman Height, because he said-
What was the question? Do you have any, did you have any calls or complaints about this issue?
Just from one property owner that's next door to it.
What was their concern, I guess is what I'm wanting to get.
Well, trucks coming in and out.
And, and I, I, I went, we went by it, oh, about three weeks ago, one night with one of the North Little Rock planning commissioners, and according to the property owner, and according to the commissioner on the planning commission, that, that pile has grown in the last several months, several weeks especially, from what it was back this summer. And the property owner called me today about it, and he'd sent the article in the paper, and, you know, he's, we're, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place, just like Maurice said, council member Taylor said, is that if we, you know, if we cease operations out there, that pile of concrete's never gonna get moved, all right? So we got, we gotta, we gotta let them remove it, okay, all right? I just don't want them to add to it, to have that, to extend that period of time, that we, I think they should have to, they should have a, have to have a permit, shouldn't they?
Well, they're, just a business license. We're giving them permission if we vote on it tonight.
I mean, that's, that was the only, the, the, that property owner, and I have had several discussions about that, and-
Let's, let's, let's vote. Y'all ready to vote? I think we're where we need to be, unless you got something else to say.
Well, I, I, I think, one, we oughta, we oughta, we have to extend the period of time they have to get it off, okay? Otherwise, it's not gonna be removed, correct?
Correct.
All right? We should make, make sure they get a permit, and we want to guarantee that that pile of concrete's not gonna increase between now and the period of time that they-
Okay, I, I would take that, that in the event that we see concrete going into that property, that I would do an executive order to shut you down. Okay, is that a deal?
We have a site that's in the county for future operations like this, we will not be doing any more recycling in the city of North Little Rock.
Okay.
No matter what.
All right. One call question?
I just got one question.
Okay.
Are we getting the taxes off of this, or is it going to the county?
You're in the city limits. We charge sales tax on everything that comes out of there, including the topsoil. So state, county, and city, sales taxes are charged and paid.
Mr. Taylor?
Um, I have a, I have a question for the city attorney, and this is just for Maurice's Taylor, Taylor's general for information.
Okay.
So I own a piece of property, and I just decided I'm gonna just pile up concrete as high as I want it to go. Because from my understanding, if I own a piece of property, I pretty much can do whatever, whatever it is I want to with it, as long as I don't violate any laws.
As long as you don't violate any laws.
Okay, so, as long as, as long as, if Maurice Taylor owned this property, and I'm piling up concrete or sand or whatever it is, and I'm not selling it, and I'm not in business, I'm just, I'm just piling it up, 'cause I like the way it looks, I, I could do that, couldn't I? I mean, really-
Probably not, it would be outdoor storage of construction materials.
I can answer that. Once the pile gets over a certain amount of height, you gotta get a special use permit.
Well, it, no, I disagree about the construction material, because on construction material, you're using it for construction, but-
But concrete is a construction material.
I, I understand, but I'm just-
That might be up to Judge Morley-
Yeah.
-whether that was a violation of, of, of the code.
Okay.
I think we're getting off topic here a little bit.
Well, it, it, no, it's not off, it's not off topic, it was just a question about, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get in my mind, I'm trying to understand, because we keep, this is the third time we've talked about this, and, and if, and if we don't do something right with this date, we'll be talking about it again. And, and we started this meeting at six o'clock, and it's almost quarter to seven, and I promise you, if we don't, if we don't get it right, and, and so we can move forward, we'll be talking about it again in May.
Well, these are the professionals, you got the contractor right there, and you got the subcontractor right there, and they both said, May the 30th is, is fine, so I'm willing to go with what they think.
I'm ready to vote. This guy here in the red shirt, he's under construction. He's gotta finish the job, but he doesn't get paid. So, I mean, end of subject, he's, he, he don't want this thing to drag.
I, I, I understand, and you're builders, and you, 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 you're in the construction business, and you know how this stuff operates, you know deadlines get missed. But it, it, it doesn't matter to me if we leave like it is, if we leave like it is, fine, but if we're gonna do, if we're gonna do right by the legislation, why don't we put them, put enough time in here to make sure they're gonna have ample enough time to get the project done, and we're not talking about it again?
How much more time you want?
I say to, until the project is complete. Just put the date into the part, to the contract, to the project is complete.
And as a builder, there's nothing wrong with a date out there. That, that's a, that's, you know, if we have to extend it, we'd extend it, but you gotta have a target.
A target date.
Extending, extending the date is-
How about till the ti, till the concrete's bent, till it's gone?
Extending the date is not the issue for me, is us spending another hour in next May talking about it.
Would it work to have maybe a built-in provision that in the event, the general, not us as a sub, but in the event either the state or the general requires another change order or an extension, we could build in-
No.
-an extension into the agreement?
Well, that's what his engine on, that's exactly what his engine on.
So maybe we could add that type of provision where it would be automatic and not necessarily have to-
Ms. Ross?
If they've been going at the rate, and they've removed 30% since August, they should be able to get it completed fairly quickly. If they don't have it finished by May, they can move it to another property that's not zoned residential, that's approved for that, and come back and get a special use.
Highway departments, there's no tax revenue gonna be-
And if it comes back again, tell that state engineer that he's gonna be up here on this podium.
So they can move it.
We invited him to.
That's a pleasure. I'm, I'm ready. Let's, we, we can call it.
Hold up, yeah.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Kaylin. Go out there and start moving some concrete for us.
I want to say one thing, I am really sorry that I have to, that, I, I feel like this has got a bad taste in y'all's mouth for me, and this is not, was not my intention when this project started. I sat down with the mayor at a roundtable discussion and tried to do everything right from the beginning, and I care about North Little Rock, and I, I always wanted to do everything right, and I'm sorry that it ended up like this.
Let's learn by our mistakes, and we'll, we'll make it better next time.
Thank you all. R-17-194, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of intent with the North Little Rock Downtown Development Board and First Orion Corporation for the purchase and sale of real property adjacent to the proposed downtown plaza.
Move for adoption.
Thank you.
Question? Ms. Ross?
I know there was a dollar price in here as far as the parcels and everything, but I, I mean-
Well, we, we don't know what it's gonna be yet. We're, we're waiting on the, the architects and engineers to, to say exactly what the footprint of First Orion's building's gonna take. We know how much we're paying for, for the property, which I believe is in the next memorandum, so we know how much. We're figuring it's gonna be a blend, part of it's gonna be $16 a foot, the other part of it that we own is gonna be $6 a foot, so probably it's all gonna come out to be about 11, is what I'm gonna guess. It could be 10, could be 12, but that's about what it is, and, and Mr. Morgan and First Orion understand that, and we, we've reached an agreement on where we're drawing the line with the Mill Property, Mill LLC, so now it's just a matter of adding things up and getting money. We're gonna come back in, we've got about $200,000 in the Downtown Facilities Board, it's gonna take about $400,000, so we'll be coming back to the city at the next council meeting to appropriate that difference. We'll buy that property, then when we close with First Orion, we'll give the city back their money. So, that's, that's coming up in the next council meeting. Okay? Am I right, Danny? I didn't say anything wrong there, that's correct. Okay. Any other questions, comments? This is a great addition to our downtown, y'all, probably the biggest thing we've touched in a long, long time. Uh, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17-195, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution endorsing memorandum of intent for the purchase and sale of real property between the North Little Rock Downtown Development Board and Mill LLC.
Move for adoption.
Second, basically the same thing, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17-197, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 713 Rose Lane in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call the public hearing, anyone here to speak on 713 Rose Lane? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17-198, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 701 and a half West 35th Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call the public hearing, anyone here to speak on 701 and a half West 35th Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17199, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1921 and 1/2 Maugh Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 1921 and 1/2 Maugh Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17201, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 4515 Orange Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 4515 Orange Street in the city of North Little Rock? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
I just want to say one thing, Mayor. I think this individual piece of property had more phone calls in 10 years than I've had on any other piece of property, so it looks much better.
Good.
Ross?
Yes, yes, yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17202, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
So move.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance is O-1791, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the retirement system of the city of North Little Rock regarding actuarial equivalent years of credited service eligibility requirements, member contributions, investing upon reemployment, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings?
Second. On the motions to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17201, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located 807 Green Lee Drive in the city of North Little Rock.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. 807 Green Lee Drive, anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17202, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
So move.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1792, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance declaring a certain city-owned street department coal milling machine surplus waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing the acquisition of a hydraulic excavator for the North Little Rock Street Department in exchange for the surplus milling machine. First reading.
Move to spend the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1792, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance declaring a certain city-owned street department coal milling machine surplus waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing the acquisition of a hydraulic excavator for the North Little Rock Street Department in exchange for the surplus milling machine. First reading.
Move to spend the readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1793, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting streets and drainage facilities within Phase 8 of Faulkner Crossing in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Let's suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Has this been blessed by Chris?
There's a letter in here.
I'm told it has.
There's a letter in it.
It has, there's a letter.
Okay, all right.
Both of them have.
On the motion.
Who was the second?
Who seconded it? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Wilburn.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Well, no, this legislation and the following legislation was all hinging on us getting some easement agreements and some other stuff done. So we're all good, we're all ready to go, everything is...
We're all good with that, and the last, the little bit of construction is happening this weekend.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ross?
Is it always, Chris?
Chris?
I, I don't know, I guess I've never thought about this before, because we just always say that we get a bond. I've never thought about, so 50%? The bond is only for 50%? Is that, that's normal? Okay. It just hasn't been in the...
That's by code.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Chris, uh, hey, Chris?
I'm going to just stand here and...
I was just going to ask you to, after the meeting's over with, would you come visit with us three real quick? Okay, thank you. Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1794, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance accepting streets and drainage facilities within Phase 8 of Faulkner Crossing in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion, suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you very much. I have no public comments signed up, so that saves us a little bit of time. Thank you, Mr. Ard. Any city council members have anything for the good of the order? We will vote on the budget next council meeting, and I think what Karen and I have decided earlier today is that we've tweaked it a little bit. One deal, Ms. Ross, is that we are going to put in $100,000 for Interstate 30 upgrade. I'm guessing, and just taking a wild guess, that we're going to end up spending about $300,000 in the next five or six years on Interstate 30 upgrades. And so my goal is to put $100,000 in a reserve account per year for the next at least three years. So that'll be there. We're going to give you a little executive summary between now and then. It'll show you the tweaks that we made. If you've got any questions, feel free to get with Karen if you want to meet with us, any department heads, we will. Let's try not to come up with some questions on the night of the council meeting that we can't answer. So let's try to answer them before the council meeting, and then we'll vote on it, get that out of the way. So, questions, comments?
The Christmas parade, I don't, if y'all want to just mention the Christmas parade Sunday?
Christmas parade is this coming Sunday at, I believe it's at two, two o'clock. And we've moved the Christmas tree down to the 400 block right across from the Argent Theatre, and the reason we did that is the Argent Theatre is doing what we hope to be an annual play of a Christmas carol. And so we thought that would add to the ambiance of the people that are going to the Christmas carol. We're going to have downtown carolers, I think, and everything, so it's going to be pretty cool. Maybe this time next year, we'll be having that party at our, at our downtown plaza. So without any others...
I'd like to let the fellow council members know that I think I represented you well in Charlotte. I was scanned, and, I mean, I went to so many sessions and learning about Facebook and tiny homes and homes for veterans and, and, so I'm just waiting on all that data to come to me, so.
Well, I think everybody here's been to at least one, and they, they know what a, it's a lot to gather. And I watched you work the whole week, so...
A great airplane reading, too.
Yeah, I watched you work. So thank you for being there and representing us. We represented well, we're proud that Mayor Stotler is our new national president of NLC, and we were glad to be there to support him. So with that, how about a motion?
I want to make a quick announcement. So as you know, we have the Arkansas City Clerks, Recorders, and Treasurers Association, and last year we bid on an international conference. We have members, 15,000 members worldwide. So I am proud to announce that in 2022, Arkansas will be hosting the conference, and I will be the host clerk for that conference.
Oh, wow.
We expect 700 to 800 delegates to come in from around the world.
When you say Arkansas, Ms. Whitby, where are you specifically speaking?
Where, in Arkansas? Well, it'll be in Little Rock, because we don't have a facility large enough for that many people.
That's correct. And how old are you? That's five years from now.
Did you just ask me that?
Knowing better. I should have known better.
Wow.
Yeah, the plaza will be ready by then. Okay, on the motion to adjourn.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-17201, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the retirement system of the city of North Little Rock regarding actuarial equivalent years of credited service eligibility requirements, member contributions, investing upon reemployment, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings?
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?